Good evening, everyone. The Locur community school board of education meeting is now called to order. And we will begin with the pledge of allegiance, but I will hand it over to Superintendent Martin.
Thank you, Madam President. This is my pledge of allegiance. Our principal from Lynch Elementary, Ms. Anita Lawrence, to introduce some of our students who are going to be leading us in the pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to introduce Mrs. Orange and Mrs. Taylor and their kindergarten students.
I promise we're really, we're really nice people.
Three of us, you know? They went to St. James's back to the street.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yes!
We would like to know which board presenting schools to bring down on this.
Thank you, Madam President. Reintroduce Ms. Lawrence, who's going to present with her team. Some staff members here today to talk about four goal three one A. Lawrence?
Thank you for having us. I want to start by saying thank you so much for coming out and being our teacher that we have there. On these, it was for separating on hierarchies and you may have always come out of the way for reading with me and and I had conversations and we said that. And I truly appreciate it.
It was truly my honor and if I could start every day like that, I would absolutely what. So, I guess I'm glad. And he, and he made my day because he said, "This year is amazing now that he's met me." So.
I say that every day.
He's in first grade.
It was wonderful. So, I appreciate that.
The next day he asked, "Who was your boss?" Who was boss and what was he doing? I was going up to his head, but.
He did ask me the same question and I told him.
Summer said it was her husband. It turned out it was a crazy husband.
I told him it was the community within the district that voted for us. Was our process. And I'm not sure maybe we explained it well enough, because they asked who that boss was and and really, we, we kind of stopped there.
Well, thank you for having us. This year we're presenting on board goal three one A. Develop and sustain high-quality collaborative processes that improve future performance in student achievement. These are the four guiding questions that we continuously focus on throughout every year of our year. Every board goal that we've presented on sums around three one A and four guiding questions. For example, the lighting look forward presentation, which allows teachers to watch others teach, focus on a guiding question, what we want students to learn or be able to do. The clickers presentation, which is a type of form of assessment focused on a guiding question, how will we know if students have mastered it? The writing strategy and trail coaching presentation, both focused on how will we respond to students who have not yet learned? And our career day presentation focused on how will we respond to students who have already done material mastery or are ready for math? So this year, continuing on the same path, we decided to implement SMART goals with staff and students. These are short-term goals that will impact our long-term goals, all focused on the four guiding questions. This chart shows how teachers are guiding their PLC goals with each question. As you can see, we have fifty-five responses and so far seventy-five percent of their collaboration is going to focus on what we want all students to learn and be able to do. Based on the SMART goals that teachers, teachers are setting, the standard will change throughout the school. After having conversations with teachers at the beginning of the year about setting grade level goals and PLCs, we spoke with them about creating short-term personal goals as well. We decided to create goals that didn't seem so far out of sight, that could be achieved in a short period of time to celebrate throughout the year and stay focused on an end goal which is to achieve. And here are a few examples of goals that have been achieved so far this year. We also created a chart to have a visual to see where teachers are with their goals, which one of the four questions it connected to in order for us to give them support whenever they needed it throughout this school year. And not only were teachers setting goals, but the coaches and I also set them. My goal was to go beyond evaluations and continue to build rapport with students and build collective advocacy with my staff by being more present in the classroom. By going into the classroom and being available, I'm able to build relationships with students outside of offices.
During our weekly hope principal meetings, we adapted our questions by shifting the focus from student performance to teacher practice. This is, this is very key in enhancing, enhancing the quality of teacher instruction. So this is how we came up with our SMART coaching goals. Planning is a huge part of cognitive coaching, but traditional methods that we've been trying, co-planning, co-teaching, modeling, was still leaving a gap between the planning and the actual lesson that was being executed. So we decided we needed to dive deeper into planning. Our solution that we came up with was the teach-first, plan-second method. We asked our new teachers to observe us teach a lesson and then create their own lesson based on what they had observed. During the debrief, we didn't just review the lesson, we received, we reviewed their plan and then found out the why. The results of the shift have been incredible and we now invite them to connect our teachers to come on to talk about their.
Hi, my name is Lindsay Taylor and this is my second year teaching kindergarten at Lynch.
My name is Megan Orange and I'm new to this year. This is my first year teaching kindergarten. To start, we want to dive into participating in the cognitive coaching cycle and how it had a meaningful impact on our planning and instruction.
Watching our learning coaches teach before planning our own lessons helped us better understand what strong, purposeful instruction looks like. During our debrief, we were able to connect our planning decisions directly to what we had observed, which made us more intentional and thoughtful in how we designed lessons.
This process helped us focus more on active engagement, higher-order thinking, prompting questions and creating opportunities for student life learning. Most importantly, it helped us understand the why behind effective planning. Not just completing a lesson plan, but planning with purpose. For this experience, we developed new goals for ourselves that center on increasing student ownership and planning more intentionally each day. One of our short-term goals was by the end of the first marking period, eighty percent of students will match with their letter and sound identification. I'm proud to share that my students met this goal and their progress has been incredible to watch. The few students who did not quite reach grade level were very close to the cutoff and continue to make steady growth.
My goals align closely with mine. As a kindergarten teacher, my primary objective is to ensure that my students master their letters and sounds, enabling them to begin reading and writing. To achieve an eighty percent success rate in meeting these goals, we implemented a learning activity known as PALS. Observing Cory and Nicole teach these lessons has highlighted the positive learning outcomes and demonstrated how effectively they help students achieve their learning, their letter and sound objectives. I am proud to report that many of my students are now writing and reading and they take great pride in their accomplishments. Some students enter my class without any knowledge of letters and sounds. For eighty percent of them to know all or nearly all of them by the end of November, just three months into the school year, reflects how hard our learning coaches, our students and teachers are working.
Our next goal is to support one hundred percent of our students in mastering their letter and sound identification as we move on to the next marking period. Now, I would like to introduce some of my students who are here to talk about their personal goals.
I have also invited a few of my students to share what they enjoy most about learning and their own personal goals.
So this is Michael. This is Luna. And this is Dana.
Hi, I'm Denise. I promise you, we won't, you know.
This is Emily. Yolanda, Ryan and Luna.
All right, Sarah, if you want to go first, what, what you're doing really well in kindergarten so far.
PALS.
So you want to show them what PALS is? What do we do on this first page? We say the ABCs. We say the letter and the
Sound.
The sound. You want to show them another page what we're working on? So what about these pages? What are we practicing? The letters and we're writing what? We're writing words, right? Nice job! Luna, you want to share what you're, what you've been working on? And now, did you tell them you know all your other spelling songs? That's good jazz! You want to tell them what your goal was, what you've been working on, Michael?
Letter, things, sounds and ABCs.
And the ABCs, you want to show them? This is one of the tools we use. Nice job, buddy!
Emily, if you want to tell what your, what your favorite thing about learning is?
I like reading because I hope to learn to read more challenging books.
Wow, right. What do you enjoy most about learning? Books. Do you want to show them the book that you love reading? Ryan, you want to tell what you enjoy most about learning?
Okay, I love.
Oh, yeah, it's funny.
And how do you learn? More challenging books. You want to show them the book that you brought? Lena, do you want to tell them what you enjoy most about learning?
I like PALS.
Do you want to show them what we're working on too?
We're working on the ABCs. Do you want mom on the top?
You guys.
What are you guys working on?
So not only are we creating goals as a staff and obviously in our kindergarten classroom, we also want to highlight some of the goals that some of our other grade levels at Lynch are achieving. So the first picture you see there, that's an example from Mrs. Carter's third, fourth grade split class, where her students are creating goals based on the learning target and their progress towards their goals. And the cool thing about this framework is it could be used in any subject area. And it could use it, it's on our front desk every day, any day of the week you want to have it on your list. Another example, the second picture you see there, is from Mrs. Carmack's first grade class. And students are setting weekly math ployty goals and tracking them. Our first grade students are also setting reading goals each month and tracking them using a graph. These goals are helping our students take ownership of their own learning journey.
So highlight the important aspects of how we're using the board goals to win a we've created a video recap using local power, which is an AI resource that we are involved with.
All right, we all want our schools to be better, right? But how does that actually happen? Well, today, we're going to pull back the curtain and look at the blueprint for success at a place called Lynch Elementary. We're going to see the specific step-by-step plan they use to get better every single day. It's a huge question, isn't it? I mean, we talk so much about school improvement, but what does that even look like on the ground, you know, day in and day out? It's definitely not magic. What we're about to see is that it's a really clear, really deliberate process. So here's the absolute core of their strategy. Lynch Elementary, they've built their entire plan around one single goal and a framework of just four questions. That's it. Four questions that guide everything they do. It's, it's surprisingly simple, but it's also incredibly powerful. Okay, so first things first, before you can build anything, you need a plan, right? You got to know what you're aiming for. So let's take a look at this school's North Star, their main objective. Now, I know this sounds a little, you know, a little education speak, but the most important part is right there in the middle, high-quality collaborative processes. What does that really mean? It means this isn't about some top-down demand. No. It's all about building a system where teachers work together to improve, which of course helps students succeed. So if collaboration is the goal, how do you actually make it happen? Well, you need an engine to drive it all. And for Lynch Elementary, that engine has a name. A professional learning community, or a PLC for short. So what is that? It's really just a fancy way of saying it's a team of teachers they need all the time, they share what works, and they help each other get better at teaching so their students can learn more. Simple as that. And this right here, this shows you just how committed they are, one hundred percent. Think about that. Every single teacher at the school is part of one of these teams. This isn't some after-school club you can skip. It's just how they do things, total buy-in from everyone. Okay, so you've got these teams of teachers meeting all the time, but what do they actually talk about? You know what keeps them from just spinning their wheels? Well, they are guided by a simple, but really powerful set of four questions. Question number one is all about clarity, plain and simple. Before a teacher even thinks about a lesson plan, the whole team has to agree on one thing. What's the absolute essential stuff a student has to know or be able to do? It just gets everybody on the exact same page. All right, next up, you got to have a way to know if you're actually succeeding, right? How do you know if what you're teaching is actually sticking? This question forces the teachers to think about that before they even start teaching. It makes sure they have a clear way to check if the students are getting it. And this one, this one is so, so important. The plan can't just end with a test. So what happens when a student is struggling? This question makes sure there's a plan already in place for extra help and support. The goal is that no one falls through the cracks. But then, you have the flip side, right? What about the kids who get it right away? You can't just let them sit there and get bored. So this fourth question makes sure there's a plan to challenge those students, to push them and to take their learning even deeper. Okay, so we've got this big-picture goal and these four guiding questions. That's great. But how does all that theory actually translate into what a teacher does on a random Tuesday morning? Let's dig into how this stuff actually shows up in the classroom. You know, I absolutely love this quote from their plan. It just perfectly nails the next step. It's all about taking those big, kind of abstract questions and smashing them down into small, manageable, short-term goals. And just look at how concrete these goals are. This is where it all gets real. These are the specific measurable answers to those four big questions. So for what do we want them to learn? Boom. The answer is single-digit multiplication facts. And for how will we know they've learned it? Boom. Eighty percent of them will be proficient. See, these are real targets for real classrooms. And that is really the magic of this whole system. It creates this unbroken line right from the school's huge overall mission all the way down to a specific thing a kid is learning in math class. Everything is connected. Nothing is random. But of course, setting big, ambitious goals is one thing. Actually hitting them, that's a whole different ballgame. A plan is only ever as good as the support system you build around it. And a huge part of that support is just keeping an eye on things, tracking progress. It's not one of those things where you set a goal in August and then hope for the best in June. No, it's about constantly checking in, seeing what's working, what's not, and being ready to adjust on the fly. So what does that support system actually look like in practice? Well, it's basically a three-part structure. First, it starts at the top. The principal and the instructional coaches meet every single week to make sure they're all on the same page. Then, that support moves right into the classroom, with coaches actually modeling lessons to help teachers sharpen their skills. And finally, and this is so cool, they bring the students into it, helping them set their own goals. That gives kids a real sense of ownership over their own learning. So the big takeaway here is that this isn't a straight line, a finish line at the end. It's a loop, a continuous cycle of improvement. The teachers set goals together, they get support, they measure how they're doing, and then they start the whole cycle over again, just getting a little bit better each and every time. And that's really the thought I want to leave you with. Because think about it, this isn't just a plan for one elementary school. It's a model for getting better at anything that's complicated. What if every plan for improvement was this clear and this collaborative? What if the plans to our work, our communities, or even our own personal goals were built on a single, clear objective, a few powerful questions, and a constant cycle of support and feedback? It's a really powerful idea to chew on.
And now I'm going to invite Emily and Luna back up. They are, they have some SMART goal track issues. Ryan, make sure each person gets one.
Thank you so much.
No questions, just comment that I just love it. I am blown away that there are kindergartners that can read chapter books. I mean, Dogman, I, I just love that there's this excitement about reading. And my favorite thing about reading is being able to go places in my mind that I can't go in my car. I mean, that is the most fun part for me and learning about other places. So keep reading, keep learning. Thank you so much, students, for coming today to share it with us. And I just love the team aspect. I mean, anybody that has been on a team, you know that your goal is to hopefully win or, you know, build a good camaraderie and have a good time. And as we all know probably, there's not always that same effect when you're going into a workplace where everybody's a part of the team. But I can see by your demonstration and just, I can just feel it. And Anita, I know, we've known each other a long time and I'm just so happy that you're staff and you have that team mentality because that is what helps so many kids just feel a part of it and just bring that community together, your, your kids and the students and the staff. I just, I'm so happy for you guys. So thank you for sharing with us.
Any other comments or questions?
I mean, I want to borrow this creation of this whole thing because I really want to share it at work.
With your loss.
I just, I kind of like, I do want to invite students to my meetings too. Whipple was a speaker, was easy to listen to and it was very, you could use it in any application. That's what I really like about it too. It's like what you're doing is, 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 is really the fundamental stuff that we should be doing, right?
I think it's a lifelong process. So you're showing that from little, right, and then you guys are teaching each other. And that, I mean, it's, it brings full circle. I think that's what's so amazing about this process is you're not afraid, you're okay to have a model, to be a modeler, to, to, you know, to show the way. I love the sharing aspect.
And I really appreciate everyone coming, all the, all the students. We really appreciate you guys sharing what you're learning and what you're proud of. We're very proud of you too. So thank you for sharing the facts tonight.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
And you can feel very welcome if you want to stay.
Was it fun? It was very fun, right? She did so good.
Love that. Thank you. Thank you.
Thomas, goodbye.
Sorry, bye. I'll see you tomorrow.
Okay, so the same thing, we do not have any public comments. I don't see cards up here. So we will go right into our presentation. So I will turn it back over to you.
Thank you, Madam President. For our annual audit report, which is a whole plan, where I had this evening's data. The floor is yours. Did you bring any children with you?
Yeah, right. Yeah.
Do you have a cool AI presentation?
Okay, well, I'm sorry to help you out.
Although someone said I want her own voice. It was a very comforting. I bought some shampoo. Yes. Like reflections were amazing. I just, she said she smashed things. Like, I really liked that. I want to learn from that, so.
Better than Siri.
Okay, I do have good news to report as well. So this will be a good news to know tonight. So I do have the results of the audit. I know we met with the finance and math committee just a couple weeks ago now and went through the information that I'll be covering with you here now. But you do have the final reports, all except for the single audit report. So you should have the final basic audited financial statement and that end of audit communication that has a lot of additional information in it. The one item that is still open right currently today is the single audit. We have been waiting on the compliance supplement, which is the guidance that the Office of Management Budget, the budget at the federal level provides to auditors to tell us what we need to audit with regards to federal programs. It actually was released last week. So we're in the process now of finalizing all the, the school, you know, federal programs audit. Did not change the work that we did perform, which was good news. We did, so I'll just start with the annual basic financial statements. We have issued an unmodified opinion. That is the highest form of assurance that you can provide that your financial statements are fairly presented and can be relied upon. Your federal programs audit, we did test the child nutrition cluster. We had no findings or question costs related to that program, which is good news. And when you do receive that final audit report, it will reflect an unmodified opinion as well, which is good. In addition to your financial statements, we do also test the compliance with your bond, with the two thousand twenty-three federal projects fund. So those expenditures that run through that fund, there, there's specific allowability rules related to those expenditures. We take a look at that and test that each year. In addition to other compliance requirements, you know, semi-run or bidding, making sure things are in accordance with the bond, bond compliance rules, as well as the ballot language that the community originally approved for that federal projects fund. And the issues with regards to that. One additional item I wanted to mention, we did work with the district in adopting a new governmental accounting standard. It seems like there is a one or two new ones each year. This one took some work and it was related to compensated absences and how the district reports the long-term liabilities related to sick and vacation days. It just modified the rules a bit. It was not a significant change with regards to this, but the work had to be done and it will continue to be done each year related to that. As you, like we saw in the end of audit communication to the board, you know, there are specific things that we need um, you know, there are specific things that we need to comment on in that correspondence, specifically what our requirements are as the district's auditors, what management's, um, requirements are, what they're responsible for as well. And again, as I mentioned, there's additional information and other, um, items to that correspondence. So, always highly recommend reading that. So, all good news. I'm just going to touch on a few items with regards to the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the district. Um, this graph details the general fund balance sheet, um, the total assets and total liabilities and deferred inflows for the year ended June 30, 2025. Total assets at June period were approximately 14.1 million dollars. Uh, the majority of the assets at, at the end of the school year, um, is the state aid receivable. So, that's the money the district is still owed. If you look at the liability side there, you can see the majority of the liability reflects salaries, contracts payable that are to be paid through the summer from those dollars the district will receive. So, once the district receives that receivable, um, that is what pays that accrued liability. Total liabilities for the year, approximately 8.1 million dollars. You can see the various components, like what make up those pieces. When looking at the revenues, the general fund received at other financing sources, um, total revenues at June period, 2025, was approximately 59 million dollars. The majority of the revenue, um, as what we're used to seeing, stems from state sources. So, this is state aid, um, the district receives, as well as those categorical dollars the district receives, which have a bit more strings attached to them. Total revenue, um, again, is 59, approximately 59 million dollars. Seventy-nine percent of that is that state source revenue. Local source revenue, approximately 9.9 million dollars, or 17%. This is predominantly of the non-hedged property tax, um, revenues. And you can also see the federal source revenue, um, there, which, uh, is about 2.1 million dollars per year reported in the general fund. Yeah, it's primarily the IDEA grant and the Title I grant. There is a small amount there, yet still, um, is from the asset dollars that the district received, which was wound down and ended during the year in September. This is a historical look at the district's people count and foundation allowance from 2020 through 2025. Um, at the very top there, that blue line, um, depicts the foundation allowance year over year. You can see that in 2020, um, the per pupil funding was, um, 8,111 dollars at that time. Um, today, or June period, 2025, it was 9,608 dollars per pupil. Um, you might note that between 2024 and 2025, that amount stayed flat year over year. At the same time, you see student population, which is at the bottom of the graph here. Um, over that period of time, um, there was a decline in students of approximately 810, um, students. A lot of big drop there, and what we see in many districts, um, is between 2021 and 2022. And that is, um, the, the lap of a full recovery, um, from that COVID timeframe. You know, the, this is not unusual, that we're seeing this in many districts just because overall there are less students in the state. And this stems from several different things, yes, um, there's a declining birth rate overall. Um, there's other competition, of course, from public school, um, children. Um, so, local schools, um, private schools, homeschooling, internet schooling now, um, as well as, um, or just the online, um, school offerings too. So, this decline, um, I'd say if you were to calculate, this is a calculation, you know, that loss of 810 students, um, that equates to around almost 8 million dollars of funding and funding dollars today. So, and over that period of time, so yes, your foundation of allowance has increased. But at the same time, you've lost students, you know, having to like make up for that. But your costs have increased over that time year over year. Your salaries and wage costs, benefits costs, your pension, um, and then also just the operating costs for the district too. So, the costs have increased greater than the amount of funding, even though the funding was going up, it still hasn't caught up. Which always means funding, you know, for every school district, you know, each year. You have your resources. Moving on to the general fund expenditures and other financing uses, um, total expenditures were approximately 63.2 million dollars per year. Um, the largest component of the district's expenditures, and this is reflected by the function of those expenditures, is the direct classroom instruction. That is 54% of the spend there. In addition to, um, 40%, uh, in the, in the constructional support and other support services, including administration, transportation operations, um, that made up that 40% there. Rounding out the other expenditures, you know, there was community service, a blood X, and some capital outlay this year. This next graph just depicts those same expenditures but sliced in a different manner. Um, this would be presenting the expenditures by object. It compares 2023, 24 to 2025. Again, total expenditures, approximately 63.2 million dollars. And this breaks it down by object again. So, salaries and fringes is what's reflected in the, what was green on the screen. It looks orange and lime here, um, the largest portion of that bar graph. And that makes sense, um, the district, um, you know, is a service organization, um, which is predominantly people providing those services. And you see the other components, supplies, and a lot of things up. And finally, fund balance. So, this depicts fund balance from 2023, 24, and 25. Um, consistent with the district's budget, uh, there was planned use of fund balance for the 2025 school year. So, fund balance did decline year over year. So, expenditures exceeded revenues by approximately 4.3 million dollars per year. So, you see that decline from 2024 to 2025. Fund balance as a percentage of expenditures, which is reflected, um, in this graph, is around 9.6% um, at the end of the year. That equates to around five weeks of operations for the district. Um, and the different components that the fund balance is made of is where you see that breakdown in, in the bar graph there. So, um, there's 3 million dollars of that fund balance, which is unassigned. And then there's approximately 2.4 million dollars that's for planned use for next year's budget. So, we adopted the budget in June for fiscal '26. That is what the budget had reflected. Now, since that time, the state's budget and, you know, more information has been received. You, you know, when you budget in June for the next year, um, you did not know what your funding is going to be, or what your people count is going to be. It's really just taking the best estimate and guess at that point in time, which is why you will amend your budget with this new information. But at that time, um, that was what was reflected. Um, the state average of last year, um, we don't have the current state average just yet, but last year, 2024, was approximately 24.7% of expenditures. And that includes all districts in the state, roughly, not districts just your size. It could be all, um, charters, all districts, all 500 districts. So, it could be skewed a little bit there. So, just to recap, positive audit results with no findings or question costs, no deficiencies in your internal controls, um, which is good news. I did want to give special recognition to Erica Ingles, who worked very hard, um, to make sure that, um, we were, uh, the, the district was prepared for the audit. Um, and thank her lovely twin, baby daughters, for being in there. Got like a good chunk of the audit done before she went off on currently. And of course, you know, Mark helped step in as well during that time too, to get through this final, um, audit identity to get through. So, really appreciate, she had a lot of motivation to do that. And worked very hard to do so. So, we, we appreciate her efforts as well as being her business office and being prepared for the audit. Thank you. I can't wait to answer any questions.
Any questions from anybody?
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you.
Thank you, Erica. We really appreciate you.
Yes, have a nice evening.
Yeah, strike safely.
Okay, we will head into our reports this evening. Our first one is finance and operations, May. Dr. Watson, would you please share us the committee report?
Certainly. So, the Finance Naps Committee met November 14th at 2:00 PM via Zoom. Uh, myself, Summer Putnam, and Lisa Novak were there. Um, others attending, Matt Wondry, Mark Rader, Erica Ingles, Julie Gattier from Barton Mallow, Donna Hansen, and Madeline Coy from Plan Moran, and Mary Moss. The meeting was called Order Two. Uh, we discussed the audit presentation. Donna Hansen, Madeline Coy, from the district's independent auditor of Plan Moran LLC, reviewed the 24-25 audit results with the committee. Uh, against this year, we received an unmodified opinion, which is the best opinion that can be received, and we got the full report tonight. Uh, bid pack number seven, domestic water replacement. Barton Mallow recommends the following from bid package seven. CSM Mechanical LLC for domestic water replacement for a amount not to exceed $421,250. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval at tonight's meeting. Bond change orders, a bond change order number 31, decorative handrail. Barton Mallow recommends the issuance of a change order to Men of Steel for decorative handrail in the auditorium and the lobby addition at the high school for an amount not to exceed $79,422. During the bid process, contractors were unable to obtain quotes for the specified decorative handrail, causing all bids to exclude them. Uh, after additional design efforts and input from leadership, a sleek and budget-friendly decorative handrail had been chosen. Uh, bond change order 32, additional sidewalk. Barton Mallow recommends the issuance of a change order to Corris Brothers for additional sidewalk at LaPierre High School for an amount not to exceed $45,937 as the note, as the new bus loop and student entrance have been in operation for the past few months. It became evident that additional sidewalks were necessary to ensure safe pathways for students. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend full board approval on both change orders 31 and 32 at tonight's meeting. And, uh, 2026 refunding bonds. Mark Rader reviewed the resolution authorizing the issuance of the 2026 refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed $30 million. The bonds will currently refund the school district's outstanding 2016 refunding bond if there are sufficient present value savings. The resolution was prepared in accordance with the bond parameters provided by PFM acting as the school district's financial advisor. The resolution authorizes the bonds to be sold pursuant to a negotiated sale with Stifel Nicolaus appointed as the managing underwriter. The resolution also delegates the superintendent and designated to authorize, uh, the authority to sell and close on the bonds without any further action of the board if certain financial parameters are met, which includes a minimum 2% present value savings requirement. It was the consensus of our committee to recommend full board approval tonight. And we adjourned at 2:54.
Okay, any comments or questions?
I have a question. Uh, the sidewalk, is that something that has, has to wait until now, until the spring? Or have that already been?
They didn't stop.
Just like that?
Yeah, we wanted to make sure that it got done because with where the buses stop off kids, we had kids that were walking through dirt. So, we ended up letting them go ahead that way. When kids get off the bus, they have a sidewalk to walk away from, but like we need.
Glad you were able to get that done before all men were made as presidents, knowing yourself. Great, thank you for taking that initiative.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you, Dr. Watson. Next, we have the teaching, learning, technology, and credit report. Mrs. LeBar, would you please share us?
Yes, we met on November 18th at 5:00 PM via Zoom. It was myself, Summer Putnam, and John Van Wadner. Others attending were Matt Wondry, Michelle Bracker, and Mary Moss. We discussed the year-round discussion of the committee discussing the elimination of the year-round calendar at the 56 Building, starting with the 2026, 2027 school year due to low enrollment numbers. We planned to communicate with staff and parents prior to whatever. We had some new course proposals. Michelle explained that there, that three new upcoming courses for school year 2026, 2027, that will give students more optional learning experiences. For 11th grade students starting in 2026, 2027, and 11th and 12th grade students starting in 2027, 2028, LHS will partner with EdTech for early college dual enrollment CTE classes. In this program, students work simultaneously towards their high school diploma and their associate's degree. There is little or no cost to students for college tuition, fees, or books. For 7th and 8th grade students starting in 2026, 2027, two classes are being proposed. One, introduction to athletic enhancement, and two, female physical, physical education. For both classes, there will be minimal to no costs and will offer more physical education choices to students. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend approval of all three classes. We also discussed an overnight out-of-state field trip request. A field trip request for the LHS band and choir students to travel to Walt Disney World in Orlando, Florida on May 26th through the 29th, 2027 was discussed. It was the consensus of the committee to recommend approval of this field trip. It would be placed on tonight's board agenda for full board consideration. We adjourned at 5:43 PM.
Great. Any questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mrs. LeBar. That concludes our reports for this evening. We'll head right into our action items. The first is a consent grouping approval of minutes at the November 5, 2025, um, meeting. Overnight out-of-state field trip request for LaPierre High School to encourage students to travel to Walt Disney World, Florida on May 26th through the 29th of 2027. Any, are there any consenting items, anyone, which is to be reviewed? Okay, I'm hearing them. I'll take a motion.
I make a motion that reading of the minutes be waived and the consent items, the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
So.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Mr. Van Wadner?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. LeBar?
Yes.
Dr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Litha?
Yes.
Dr. Novak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putnam says yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, um, the next we have bid pack number seven, domestic water replacement.
I'll make a motion that bid pack number seven, high school domestic water replacement be ordered to CSM Mechanical LLC for an amount not to exceed $421,250.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion?
What is domestic water? What is that? Is that the entire?
So, it's, yeah, it's the, it's the water line that hooked off, the main water line. It goes to both sides. So, replace, replacing it along basically one side of the building all the way to the other because it's leaking.
It's your drinking water, cooking water, sure.
Yeah. Because I know that we've had those filtration systems. Is that what leads them to, I mean, the tap?
They'll, they'll end up feeding it, yeah.
They'll end up feeding that, okay.
Yeah, so we're just doing the main line to the cold, the hot, and the research.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's leaking, so it's curving on the brand new tile, so.
I heard about the hole in the ceiling of this one.
Yes.
And I was very concerned about it. And I knew somebody had it taken care of, so, okay.
Okay, great. Any other discussion? Great. Mr. Van Wadner?
Mr. Van Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Labarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Yes.
Yes.
Dr. Novak?
Yes.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries.
We're getting together down there.
Okay, now we have change order number thirty-one, page six, LaPierre High School decorative handrail.
I'll make a motion that change order number thirty-one, L H S decorative handrail be awarded to Men of Steel for an amount not to exceed seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars.
Support. Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
I'll go back with tradition with aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Mrs. Labarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Yes.
Mr. Luka?
Yes.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Putnam says aye. Motion carries.
There is more than America, that's more fun than LaPierre Community Schools.
Okay, last one of the year, we have a little.
That's right, that's right, that's right, thank you.
Change order number thirty-two, bid pack number six, LaPierre High School additional sidewalk.
I make a motion that change order number thirty-two, additional sidewalk, be awarded to Cordis Brothers for an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand, nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Yes.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Mrs. Labarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries.
Julia?
Is our twenty-two sixty-six refunding bonds resolution?
I'll make a motion that the resolution authorizing the twenty-two sixty-six refunding bond be approved at two thousand.
Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Mrs. Labarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, and I think our last one here is the thirty-one double A refunding resolution.
I'll make a motion that the resolution authorizing OPAN for mental health and safety grant under section thirty-one A A be approved as presented. Support.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, hearing none. Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Mrs. Labarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our action items. I will then open it up for board member communications.
Well, I'm gonna go ahead and start.
Good.
Yes, with an apology for not remembering custom for this particular board. So on another board in the last week, there actually was discussion on, in that board, whether to use the term aye or yes. And Robert Rules clarified that if you're doing individual vote, it should be yes, and if you're voting together, it's aye. So my confusion, wrong board.
I'm like, fine, that's okay.
This board has matching uniforms. Right.
Okay.
That's okay. Other topics or communication on the board this evening?
I think tonight's presentation was cute. The kids were Dallas. So I think the A I thing was kind of cool. So good presentation, always moving.
The best part is seeing the kids and seeing how anxious they are. But when they get up here and they're surrounded by their teachers and just they start to feel comfortable, they realize that we're not the monsters up here behind us. And just, just to be able to engage with them and it's just always a highlight whenever kids are brought. You know, from kindergarten up to seniors in high school, it's nice to see our kids involved and wanting to see how this work is done. And it's wonderful that the parents took the time and brought them and braved the elements to come up tonight. It's just great to see that community. I mean, to have a packed room on a Wednesday night at seven P M during a snowstorm shows the dedication of our parents. And we just are so grateful that they showed up and allowed your presentation to be the shining light that it was tonight. So thank you, Anita.
You know, I'm gonna stick to it. You ain't never been shy of doing your life.
I can't complain. I have witnesses.
No.
No.
Noted.
Anyone else? I, I follow the comments for sure. The building presentation is always my favorite every time. Just seeing how you guys, I always say to myself, how are they gonna up it? Keep upping it? And you guys do it fantastic. You keep digging, keep digging, and the kids just keep flourishing from it. So appreciate that.
I keep saying to myself, how are we gonna up it too?
Well, now you know I'm not scared. You gotta like. And then honestly, Erica, thank you, but it takes everyone. So thank everyone for being such great leaders in our district to continue year over year getting an unmodified opinion. I mean, I've said, this is my seventh year right now. And I mean, I know all seven years that I've sat on this board, it's been unmodified. And I know plenty of years prior to that. So it takes a lot of due diligence on everyone's part. So just wanna thank everybody. And then Erica, you hanging in there till last minute, helping us get through that piece. We appreciate that.
Fine, yeah.
We, we appreciate that.
I tried to.
So I just want to, our appreciation, and then always appreciate that coming in and then sharing with us the great results. So, thank you. With that, I'm gonna turn over you to Brooklyn Wondry.
Thank you, Madam President. Yeah, the last couple of days Erica was at work. I knew it was getting close when she took her shoes off around eight-thirty in the morning, and she had to sit on the couch and call P M's because she didn't sit in the chair anymore. She was there, doing, doing a great job. One of the things in Melissa's presentation that I don't want to gloss over, and I want to highlight for the board, and this is something that's significant. You have two, you know, relatively new teachers, right? You have two young kindergarten staff. And to hear them speak about the opportunity to have veteran learning coach teachers model for them what high-quality instruction looks like, I can't even begin to imagine how different your career with my teaching career would have been had I seen someone with, you know, fifty years of experience combined with those two teachers show me how to do it. Teaching is a very isolating profession. And for years, I was a twenty-one-year-old first-year teacher who got thrown the keys to a classroom and said, "Good luck." And he kind of figured it out. He did some good things. He did some things that you wish you could take back. But it certainly would have been, I mean, for any of us in that profession. Anything about, you're starting out in any profession, about we've got the lives of young people at stake, there's not a lot of room for experimentation, or at least we hope there isn't. So the learning coach model is designed to lessen that steep learning curve of a teacher who's A, branded the profession, or maybe B, teaching a new grade level for the first time or a new content area, that we don't just throw them the keys and say, "Good luck." We have a system to onboard them and to lessen that learning curve. So I, I think that's something we need to highlight every time we hear and see it in action.
I wanted to ask, I didn't want to put them on the spot, but I did want to ask them their thoughts of having the learning coaches in the room. Like what, what do they see the value of it? Like, I wanted to get their perspective, but.
I'll tell you, but Anita will.
I, I didn't want to put them on the spot in case it was like a, they weren't prepared for that type of question. But I know we met.
Yeah, I, I wish you would have because they, they're like the life support almost, you know? They, they build their confidence as teachers. They guide them, they model for them, they play with them. They, they do everything they can to support them, to get them to a point where then Megan Orange, that was here tonight, she finally was like, "Okay, I think I have this," you know? Like they are there to make sure that they feel confident enough to be able to do that.
I actually heard that even from teachers that's been teaching a while. I actually was at your school, not last year, thirty-four, and talked to learning coaches on a couple of the other. And that was one of the things, the support from those learning coaches is outstanding, so.
Like I, I value it a lot, I guess.
Well.
It's priceless, really.
You know, Lisa knows this. How, how rare is it in our profession to sit down with a bunch of people that are doing what you're doing and looking at data, talking about how to make improvements, but then also have experts come in? And not, it's not a, you know, just get on and watch what I do. Right, right. It's a trust to appear.
That's what's nice about the model, right? There's no competition there.
It's not an argument, right? I'm not here to tell you you're doing a good job or a bad job. You're here to be honest with me and say, "Hey, what do you need help in?" No, Anita's part of that whole process. The principals are part of that process. They run the building, they manage the personnel, and they can make decisions about how to allocate the learning coach resource, right? That's, that's ultimately Anita's, you know, buckstash will occur. But to essentially walk into a classroom, maybe see some things that could, could use some growth, and then go to Nicole or Cory and say, "I'd like you to sit down with the teacher, have a dialogue about this process." And then they're off and running. All she really becomes at that point is the coach checking in, right? How are things going, right? Let me see some progress. Let me know when you want me to come in and kind of take a look at how things are going so we can gauge if it's having success or not. As opposed to taking learning coaches out, having the one principal go to twenty teachers and try to grow their practice and around the building at the same time. It's not, if you look at any profession that where a leader has to monitor four, or five, or six, or ten different types of people doing different jobs, you can't possibly model for every one of them how to do it effectively. So just take teaching out of it. Think of your own profession and say, "Man, if I had a learning coach for every different aspect of, or facet of my job, wow, how much more efficient would we be eventually?" And it's not a, it isn't a lifelong thing. It's a, "I'm gonna get you going, get you started, and then when I, like you mentioned with Megan, okay, I think I got it." And that, then that coach moves on to a different resource. The final thing I wanted to discuss that I don't want to be glossed over in the T L T report was the termination of essentially the middle school year-round program. And it was quite a detailed conversation at the committee level, at the COE level. It was exhaustive, and all of these decisions that relate to reduction of programming or budgetary decisions come with them. A pretty detailed communication outline whereby no one's being caught off guard or proactively communicating these things. So this week, I met face-to-face with the five-six year-round teaching staff. Then I met with the T R L staff. Because if you're a T R L year-round teacher and you hear five-six year-rounds going away, what are you thinking? So we wanted to proactively, no, no decision's been made, but we wanted to proactively get in front of those, those teachers, the principals, and parapros, and staff, and just say, "Hey, listen, you know, this is gonna be a difficult budget cycle." I mean, although we had an unmodified opinion, we saw some things that we need to address, given the fund equity position and a variety of other factors. And everything is on the table for consideration. And I'm gonna say that probably the next seven or eight board meetings. So people, it does not strike your ear funny when you hear that major change is on the horizon. And we have to keep at the center of our thinking as a board and leadership team that the student experiences of the classroom was, was most important to us. We have to safeguard and protect that to the best of our ability. So things that don't touch the classroom are areas that we look at first. That's a very vague way of saying we want to protect student programming to the best of our ability and make decisions about cuts that, you know, are as far away from the classroom as possible. That's our goal. The year-round calendar was more of a, the reduction of it at the five-six level was more about student interest level and family interest level waning as a direct result of our student decline. You have to have certain numbers of kids to do it in order to sustain the program. When we first started the year-round program fourteen years ago, we very rare, very consistently had seventy-five or eighty fifth graders leaving T R L and heading to the middle school level, continuing year-round. And when you have seventy-five, eighty, ninety kids, you can staff, full staff hopefully for that. But when you get down into the thirties and forties, it's just, it's a law of numbers at that point, the law of diminishing returns. So I didn't want to gloss over that. I wanted to publicly discuss that with the board. And, and that's, this is a tough thing for us, you know, having been the superintendent here when we reintroduced year-round education at LaPierre. I was a part of, as long as many people over here to my right, interfaith with parent, community groups, and staff members, and teachers, and talking about different ideas that we had in LaPierre. We talked about a STEM school. We talked about a performing arts school or magnet concept. We talked about year-round balanced calendar. We talked about potentially the district-wide year-round calendar. All those things were discussed many years ago, and many people gravitated towards the idea of balanced calendar year-round. They loved it. And it's hard to see something that, you know, we brought back, that families love, go away, but it don't have as much as it used to. So we gotta let the numbers drive our decisions in many of these instances, and this is a reflection of that. So I just wanted to highlight that and not just have it be a sentence on a committee report that people didn't understand what all that goes into these decisions. I can lose my comments, Madam President.
Okay.
Motion to adjourn, sir.
Mr. Van Wagner?
Aye.
Mr. Carpenter?
Aye.
Mrs. Labarre?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Dr. Novak?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam says aye. Motion carries.